Testing, testing, testing.
You got it.
I am a scout pilot. Technically working on that stoping liaison thing. We've started calculating such one. Co-pro liaison. If you do such one, I take care of the others. Like you said, she takes a lot of managers for this stuff. Helping with the advisory side. So, I'm calculating course of such ones. The most sensitive part in our place of employment. No one's a great. Unlike her portion. Because all the way to 20. Wow, so that's happened. And things were real slow.
That's bad.
That's early for me. The not using the catapults. They didn't form until these weeks. If the...
Food stuff is slow or what?
No.
Just because you want to...
Well, yeah, I mean, things is slower as far as the times. After Christmas and after the year. There are festivals per se. Except for there are things sometimes at the gate. There's a couple of them here. And something, you know, the usual on the return.
Right.
It does slow down. They're just routine instructions. Space travel. Well. And so all, all the various titles, if you will. Got drawn down. January, February. Decent field to work on. Well, certain stuff there. Some partners have taken it. Testings. There's a few of them. And so the tent, you know, the age. Tents up there. There's a quarter. There's a few, few palstins that lights up there. But overall, you know. I guess you know.
Is this you?
Yeah. Food, goods, food. We, we're getting food licenses based on our restaurant. Current requirement. Sometime, usually a month. They shoot for March 1st or 4th. Plus or minus 425 license applications to us. So that we can bear one of the other. Number that we set home. To all restaurants. They need to get those applications back to us. For you. To be the best people. So, you know, with 425 to 450 applications. You know, it's an administrative or heavy process. When those applications come back in. That's what I'm saying.
Those, the contracts that we're waiting for?
Well, so, they, they got set.
Yeah, and I sent the one to Delaine. It just, whatever place she wasn't in the office at all last week. Delaine was out of the office. You know, it just, so she's got, because she's got a couple things. Matthew's very concerned too. What came about.
Well, and it came to this.
Actually.
Other club or some like this. I'm thinking of another. Because I tried to get this up. Actually, they might be able to. So help them. Actually, it starts on August.
So, we should have those by the end for sure. She's gonna, I think she's gonna try the bucket today to get it signed. If not, he probably signed off.
And it sounds like the, the like, the process. I, I'm curious.
He is, but you've got to, like, we have to, Delaine has to as well.
You don't all you crew up with her.
And like, tell him that you've got that in there. But he's been signed. So, so we'll get that finished.
But, you know, it's, it's not, this is not what Mike is concerned with. Above average for weightiness? Usually it is. Showing up sometime, you know.
That would be ideal. Since they start in...
October 1st. And they recognize that, you know. That's always been a problem. We do have a new service. And unfortunately, they don't do that. The reason there's a contract. That they have not assigned. E-grands towards this one. And they hold it. They already made the best. Updates. Updates are sort of their. Unfortunately, Eddie. I don't know, but it's been the US person. They think Eddie. And for all their programs set up and eventually. It's very, and at this point, it's kind of very real for us. By the point of kind of various programs. They may be more connected. Just going to have that really important thing to the program. Based on. Now, type two is a completely separate program. They're kind of late. They're kind of somewhat held hostage by the EPA. But they kind of started developing their own replacement water truck program. Type two. EPA went for five months, six years. Starts the process about millions, millions of dollars. Get the, we have a base management software. Tapped it up, based on. And then got it to a point where it cut it off. Because it was not, not usable very much. Back to the tronics also. I kid you not.
Our tax money card at work.
Yeah. Sorry, that's not, it's like the first time.
Oh, no.
A grandiose idea. Bitcoin panel.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, it sounds like they're coming.
As far as regular business wise. See how, it's like that, that was minister. Minister just doing survey. I have no idea. Matthew's Catholic. Cancel my cruise today. It's from cruise two, twenty three. For the fifth time. This is the fifth time. No, this is only our second one. This one was actually supposed to be for last year's spring break. My daughter, and there were three families going. We went, this would only be the second time. My son's senior year. We went out there again with, with friends. And then we had this one scheduled for 2020 spring break. And then we rescheduled for 2020. Yes, not even last year's spring break. Two years ago's spring break. 2020 spring break. That was right at the beginning. So we canceled it. We chose to take this, you could either at that point cancel and get your money back. Or get future cruise credits and maybe even extra 25%. So it was like, you know, and that was March 2020. We knew that. Well, that bound us to keep our money. So that we can get our money back when we use our cruise. So we scheduled.
But they allow you to postpone.
Yes, and something just came out yesterday. That most of them have been canceled by them. This is the first time we're canceling. Because we scheduled for Christmas of 2020. That was canceled. We scheduled for something in the spring of 2021. And that was canceled. And then we scheduled for October of 2021. That one was canceled. And then this one, this was gonna be the one. But it's not canceled yet. But, you know, CDC is advising against it.
Oh, they have.
Oh, yeah. And you spend that much money. Like, the bigger concern is even if we can cruise other ports. Like, we have five different places that are stopping. I don't want to just stay in the loop. I mean, it's, it's fun. It's a getaway. But I mean, going is supposed to be a risk.
We have, we have never been on a cruise. We toyed with the idea of just having.
It's nice because you do get to go away to the different experience. Like, we were, we were scheduled for Sunday and we stopped. And we have one day that we don't stop somewhere. And then we were supposed to fly into Puerto Rico. So we were gonna fly into Puerto Rico on Sunday and get on the cruise that night. And then we're like, hmm, you know, we're like seven. So we were even doing an excursion like in Puerto Rico. Some city tour. Before our flights left that, that Sunday. And so it's a great way to see like those different places. But, but if we take it up, oh. And that's the big scare right now with that. But what you're hearing is they're not letting.
No, it's almost like, you know, you're breathing heavily. Well, exactly. But it's almost, because if you get on a cruise now. You're, it's a different chance. Come back for one.
Yeah.
Don't need to take that risk.
And that's the same thing. Like, it doesn't, it's kind of not the best thing. Me in my position. I'm cruising.
Yeah.
I have a picture from my cruise that has been for. Well, that's the other thing too. Like, people were getting stuck. Totally. Getting stuck in other countries. So, and we were flying to Puerto Rico. So, I don't want to get stuck.
We were considering Puerto Rico. We are considering Puerto Rico. This Christmas break. Either before Christmas or after Christmas. Most of the Christmas. I'm figuring what happened. Starting with the prices. Starting two months ago. The Asian, my wedding. They're actually gone to Puerto Rico. Pre-Christmas. Right. Prices, you know.
Astronomical call it up.
So it did happen. I thought it was pretty, it did happen. The numbers were calling up.
I, I kind of knew we weren't gonna go. But there's that in the back of my mind. Like, it's December, December, middle of December with numbers. Yeah.
It's weather, it's always.
It's just that moment. And then something came out about extended dates.
Well, at some point.
Some point, at some point. We may be 80, but.
Oh, it won't be that. Oh, it won't be that.
Motion. Support. All right.
Acta dos, September twenty twenty three, something like that, on CDBG. The CDC requires us to have a public hearing to accept the funds and then.
A public hearing to close the grant.
The grant was through, um.
December of twenty twenty.
We've completed all our reimbursement, it was a reimbursement grant. We are required to post notice in the paper, um, for a public hearing, then a public hearing that followed twenty twenty.
And then this is.
Closing the grant. We posted a notice in the paper. Out of the grants, um, we were eligible for $309,601 and some change. We were able to spend $242,280 and some change. Um, we have completed all requirements of the grant, with the exception of the scheme of public hearing, which was made as well by the public. We did post it in the paper, we had verification of that, and that was required. So we did post it in a different requirement of the CDC. We posted it later. So we did post it in a different requirement to CDC, I know all the people were here.
See any requests from the public?
Or any questions?
Yes, can you? Yes, you can.
Yeah, Mike?
My mic's working, right, yeah.
Okay, so is that pretty much it, Debra?
Yes, it was just, um, today's hearing is just for public comment or public questions. Um, we did not receive any, we did post it in the paper per the requirement of CDBG. And, um, the hearing is basically for public comment or questions. I've got all the materials in case the public inquired, but we did not have any inquiries.
And there's no action that the board needs to take?
Um, there's no action other than holding a public hearing. Um, we hosted one in fall of 2020 to open the grant. Um, and similarly, we had no comments or questions at that time either.
Mr. Baer?
I'm fairly, I'm quite certain this is not a recent event or recent information. So I'm disappointed it was not, no information was included in our board packet. So we could review it ahead of time and be prepared. To me, there's no reason that it should not have been presented to the board in a, in a document form, so we could review it. Part of the problem not having the documentation ahead of time is I can't follow your numbers when you're reading off that fast. The original grant was three hundred and ninety what?
We weren't given the money, it was what we were eligible for. So the original amount that we were eligible for reimbursement for was three hundred and ninety thousand. And some change.
Hey, guys, the video be on something else?
Yeah, we're trying to resolve it right now.
Okay.
I closed the page, so hang on, bear with me. Three ninety six oh one point one six.
Three ninety six oh one?
Point one six is what we were eligible for reimbursement for.
And what did we actually spend?
Again, it was a reimbursement, so we had already spent two forty two, two one eight point eight six.
Okay, so your report today is that we were eligible to receive reimbursement for three hundred and ninety thousand six oh one. Six hundred and one dollars. We have only been reimbursed two hundred and forty two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars.
Okay.
Are you looking for any kind of action today?
No.
We had another hundred and fifty thousand we could have been eligible for.
There's no action needed, today's purpose is only for a public hearing, for comment from the public regarding any information that they wanted on the reimbursements or the spending of this grant. So that's the purpose of today, so there's no action required.
All right, I'm a commissioner, I'm also a member of the public.
Right.
So as a member of the public, um, if we were eligible for another two hundred and forty eight thousand dollars, how come we didn't spend it?
Because MEDC would not approve it. We worked on this grant extensively, and we were denied many items that were for reimbursement. So we worked on this very, very hard and did not get the money back. So again, it was a reimbursement, and they denied us in some, in many items.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments from the public? Commissioners, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So move. We have a motion in support to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Those opposed?
The heck is going on with this thing?
Thank you. Health Department, Health Department Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance. Who wants to begin this discussion? Hi, Crystal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I'm actually going to pass this off to, um, Director of Environmental Health, Don Haydeck. He's the one who's worked on this ordinance with Eagle and, and all that goes along with it, so he's far better tuned to answer those questions or any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, hope everybody had a good holiday while you're away. Um, I'll just briefly go over a little bit of the history. Uh, approximately two and a half to three years ago, we were audited by Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, uh, for the soil erosion program in the, in our division. Uh, we were noted some deficiencies during that audit by Eagle. Uh, we began the process of correcting those deficiencies. Uh, the major deficiency was, uh, insufficient staffing for the program, uh, which created an inability to do the number of sufficient number of inspections on any given site, uh, which was cited in the report. So we started that process of increasing the number of staff. Not physical numbers of staff, but those that were actually certified to actually conduct inspections, uh, or plan review in the program. Uh, at the, or at that time, we only had two staff members that were actually certified to conduct work, which we had been doing for eight to 10 years or so with those two field sanitarians. They were doing the entire program. Um, after the audit, we, we got the rest of the sanitarians certified to do inspections to supplement the two field staff, the wastewater and well staff, if you will. Uh, because they could do the plan review. The rest of the sanitarians could do the inspections, uh, supplement the inspection work. That's, uh, was the key component of correcting the deficiencies. Uh, Eagle actually did, uh, approve that. Uh, they basically responded, said, "Yeah, you did, did well." Uh, so at this current time, all six of my sanitarians are certified at some level to work in the Soil Erosion and Sedimenta- Sedimentation Control Program. Uh, another major, uh, deficiency, although it's not a major one, was that our ordinance that was, uh, enacted in, on June 17th, 2008, needed updating. Uh, because there are numerous references to Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. It's now Eagle, Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. Uh, as well as, uh, a number of the definitions, uh, had changed within the Eagle website. Um, so those were corrected, there were some grammar changes. Um, and there's really only one significant change that we made to the ordinance. Uh, and that was, uh, if you look at your redlined, uh, changes, I believe it's cha- page nine. Um, we changed the, uh, the amount of time that we were providing ourselves to uh, issue a permit upon application, uh, materials being submitted, from 15 days to 30. What that did was actually get our ordinance in line with what the State of Michigan Part 91 rules actually say. Prior to this, we were more restrictive. Uh, the 15 days is basically two weeks. Um, generally speaking, we get a permit out in a week or two, okay? However, in very, very busy times, we might be pushing that, uh, 15 day and occasionally exceeding that 15 day. So this really gives us a little bit of a buffer, uh, a little bit additional time during, say, the busy times of, uh, May through September, uh, when they're also doing wastewater, uh, heavy numbers. They're doing well permits and what have you. Um, so that's, uh, we're, what we're talking about here is this ordinance. So the vast majority of the changes that are being proposed that, uh, we are asking you to discuss and, and approve are definition changes that are coming right off of the Department of Eagle, uh, website for uh, definitions, uh, as well as, uh, that one major change. Uh, this has been reviewed by our legal counsel, and as part of the Part 91 rules, the Jackson County Conservation Service was also, uh, was required to review the draft. That, they did so, they found some additional grammar changes, nothing significant. Uh, it's always good to have, uh, second and third eyes. Uh, Eagle, uh, then basically has double approved it. They initially approved the draft that was sent over to Conservation Service, and then uh, the changes that I brought in from the Conservation Service, they've approved again, so... And then legal counsel looked at it, uh, they had two or three changes, but, you know, they were just grammar changes. Uh, so, we've had, uh, one, two, three, four reviews from various, uh, entities, and this is what you have, the final product in front of you.
Commissioners, questions? Start with Commissioner Snell.
Um, I'm looking at the recommendation here, it says to approve updates. Should we be approving an amendment to the ordinance? Not just an update?
We're actually looking for this to go to the full board. So it would go through the normal requirements, so, but yes, updates.
Yeah, it, it is an update, there are changes, obviously. Um, uh, really, the only significant process change would be that 15 days to 30 days.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at process of when you have an ordinance, and you make a change to it, and it becomes an amendment to the ordinance.
So what's gonna occur is this will go to general government for amendment approval there, and then to Tuesday night.
Okay, yeah, I understand that.
Yep.
I'm just, I'm just asking for clarification.
We will have a direct...
Approving updates, and we should be approving...
We'll have a direct clarification for you for, for that on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
If there's any questions.
Should, uh, we clarify the language as far as the motion requested for, uh, general government?
Not quite there yet.
Yeah.
Commissioner Baird, then Commissioner Walls.
Uh, good morning, Don.
Good morning.
Looking at your letter proposal here under Part 3 Analysis C, uh, the second parag- paragraph. I see that you have sent this to the Jackson County Conservation District uh, for review and comment. Uh, I do not see that you have sent this to our Drain Commissioner. Uh, when our county drain commissioner reviews site plans for approval, one of the things drain commissioner takes into consideration is the Soil Erosion Sedimentation Control rules. So before I will vote to support this, I need to see you send this to our Drain Commissioner and get his comments. His comments, to me, are...
Well, I do wanna, you know, make sure that the Drain, the Drain Commission works under Act 40 of 1956, the Drain Commission Code. This is, we work under Part 91 of, uh, Act 378. Uh, Part 91, a different act. Uh, we have jurisdiction for soil erosion and sedimentation control under the Eagle rules, Part 91 rules, which apply to properties, yeah, in close proximity to lakes, streams, rivers, as well as county drains. Uh, the Drain Commission has jurisdiction over county drains. We do work together. Uh, Commissioner, um, Drain Commissioner Snyder does refer items to us. We come, occasionally come across a situation where we refer to his office as well. Uh, we have this referral process that works fairly well. And the, uh, getting his review was not part of the Part 91 rule process. Uh, again, this was, uh, directed and initiated by Eagle. Uh, the Jackson County Conservation District is actually written in the rules as far as uh, needing to review, um, but the Drain Commission is not written in the rules. But I will take your comment into consideration, uh, depending on what the rest of the board feels.
I appreciate the fact that you and the Drain Commissioner work together. I'm just asking that you continue to work together, and you give him a copy of this, and give him the opportunity to review it and make comments. To, to refuse that, to me, is, uh, absurd. I don't care what acts each of you operate under.
Just wanted to make sure you were aware.
You need to work together, and you need to work together on this review.
Commissioner Walls?
Good morning, Don, and correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't the Jackson County Department of Transportation have this, um, Soil Erosion and Sediment program at their facility?
Well, they, they are, they are what is known as an authorized APA, an authorized permitting agency. So what that means, the State of Michigan Department of Transportation is also an APA. Jackson County Department of Transportation is an APA. So what, for their own construction projects, they issue their own permits. They are, but they come under auditing or review by Eagle, not by us. We are, uh, the Health Department, my, our division here, is the CEA for Jackson County, which is the uh, enforcing agent, the county enforcing agency. Every county in Michigan has a CEA. For us, it's us. Uh, Livingston County, it is the Drain Commission. Uh, in Washtenaw County, I'm not exactly sure which agency, but it varies. Um, for one thing, the, generally speaking, the Health Department is not the, uh, county enforcing agency across the state of Michigan. There are about five to eight of us, uh, out of 83 counties, if you will. Um, Drain Commissions, you know, make up some, and then Department of Transportation's, uh, tend to be uh, a lot, uh, as far as CEAs. But in our case, uh, the Department of Transportation over JC, JDOT, is an APA. So we don't actually do any of their permitting.
Okay, I just needed some clarity with that.
It can be a little confusing at times.
Yes, I, yeah, I'm already...
Took me a while to figure it out as well, and, uh... And in, in, in reality, other entities could become an APA if, say, so desired, such as the City of Jackson, could become an APA. They have chosen not to do that at this point in time.
So we handle all their permitting and inspections?
Yes, we do, yes.
Through Jackson County Health Department?
Yes.
Okay.
Only JDOT is an APA within our county.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay. Excuse me. Uh, Don, the reason for the 15 days within the Soil Erosion Permit Language was because the Board of Commissioners felt that 30 days your staff was, would be taking too much time and would hold projects up. Your belief is, is that internally, you can keep that 15 day as a goal, but at some times, you may have to expand out to 30 days, correct?
Correct.
It will not become a habit of 29 days for permitting.
Pragmatically, yes, you are correct.
I, I appreciate that, and that was, that was where the 15 days co- came from, is the Board of Commissioners wanted to make sure, and the reason why, uh, the Health Department is our enforcing agency in overseeing soil erosion was because of that. Other agencies within the county were choosing to take extended periods of time to return permits, and were slowing up projects.
Well, and I will say that we've been living under the 15 day, uh, ordinance rule. Uh, we have, we were not cited at all by Eagle for that, for exceeding that 15 days. Um, so, we can continue to live with that 15 day rule, or anything in between, uh, that the Board of Commissioners so deems.
Okay, so what I'm gonna be looking for is a motion to direct the deputy health officer to recommend to general government a review of and possible amendment to the Soil Erosion ordinance, and have it follow the general government and normal pathways this next month, so we can complete it in January. So moved. We have a motion in support. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, duly carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've now arrived at Item 8A, and Item 8A, we, do we wanna take these tentative agreements together, or do you want them separate? Mr. Overton? Thank you. Ratified tentative agreement reached with the Assistant Prosecutors Association and the Michigan Nurses Associations for new collective bargaining agreements for period January 1, 2022 through December 31st, 2024, and authorize the board chair to sign the select, the successor collective bargaining agreements upon approval as to form from Jackson's, from the county's legal counsel. So moved. We have a motion in support on the floor. The vote will be appearing in front of you. Pass 7-0. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. We have arrived at public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none. Any Commissioner comments? Seeing none. Entertained a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried, thank you.